Good afternoon, everyone. Today is April 15th here at the Salina City Commission regularly scheduled meeting with some rather exciting things on the agenda today. I'd like to call the meeting to order and have the clerk call the roll.
Mayor Jennings?
Here.
Commissioner Angel?
Here.
Commissioner Crawford?
Here.
Commissioner Householder?
Here.
Commissioner Shirley?
Here.
Would those that are able, please rise, join me for the Pledge of Allegiance in a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you. We start our meeting today with the Citizens Forum. If we have any citizens among us that would like to come and address the Commission with comments or any issues, please do so now and state your name, address for the record. Seeing none, we move to the next part of the agenda, which is awards and proclamations.
The day of April 26, 2013, as Arbor Day in the city of Salina. Jerry Holtz, Tree Advisory Board Chairman, will read the proclamation.
Mr. Holtz, welcome.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Commissioners. Can you hear me all right? My name's Jerry Holtz. I'm the chairman of the Tree Board, Citizen Tree Board. I live at 169 Bel Air Drive here in Salina. If I may, I'll read this proclamation. Whereas on 18/7, 1872, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees. And whereas this holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska, an Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world. Whereas trees reduced to erosion and their precious topsoil by wind and water, by heating and cooling cost, moderate temperatures, clean air, produce oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife. And whereas trees are renewable resource, given as paper for wood, for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products. And whereas trees in our community increase property value, enhance the economy, but it's fatality of business areas, and beautify the community. And whereas trees were wherever they are planted, are a source of joy, spiritual renewal. And whereas Salina has been organized as a tree city by the National Arbor Day Foundation and desired to come and continue tree planting practices. Now therefore, I, Norman Jennings, Mayor of the city of Salina, do hereby proclaim April 26, 2013, as Arbor Day in the city of Salina and our joyful citizens to celebrate Arbor Day and to support efforts to protect our trees and our woodlands. Further, I urge our citizens to plant trees to gladden the heart and promise the well-being of this and future generations dated to April 15, 1923, day of April.
Excellent. Do you have any activities that you would like to let us know about in celebration of this?
We have several of them this year. By May, the first opposition will have been on the 19th of April, Friday the 19th. We'll be doing, we're going to use two days, and we're going to plant black walnut seeds in Lakewood Park. We'll have some of the school kids there from Lakewood area will come over and help us on the first day. The second day will be on the 26th of April. Again, they'll be planting the walnut seeds. But the Tree Board and Steve Blue, our tree forester, will be having a special celebration in Oakdale Park. We were planting trees in Oakdale Park assisted by about 75 students from Oakdale Park School. It's something we do, we try to every year, try to plant some trees every year, either at schools or someplace. And the kids really enjoy this, get a lot out of it, they enjoy it. It's something for everybody to partake in. And I would invite anyone, Commissioners or otherwise, citizens, to come and participate with us. It's enjoyable, you might get your hands a little dirty, but it's an enjoyable time and it helps renew our trees in Salina.
Excellent. Anything else, sir?
I believe that's all.
Okay. I have a signed copy of the proclamation if you'd like to come forward.
And thank you, Jerry, for all of your help with the veterans.
Thank you.
Item 4.2, the day of May 2, 2013, as National Day of Prayer in the city of Salina. Val Johnson, National Day of Prayer Committee co-chair, will read the proclamation.
Ms. Johnson, welcome.
Whereas the National Day of Prayer is a tradition first proclaimed by the Continental Congress in 1775, and whereas in 1952, the National Day of Prayer breakfast became an event inaugurated by the leadership groups in the United States Senate and the House of Representatives. And whereas in 1988, legislation was unanimously ratified by both Houses of Congress and signed by President Ronald Reagan stating that the National Day of Prayer was to be observed on the first Thursday of every May. And whereas this year will mark the 62nd consecutive observance of the National Day of Prayer. And whereas it is fitting and proper to give thanks to God by observing this day in the city of Salina when all may acknowledge our blessings and express gratitude for them while recognizing the need for strengthening religious and moral values in our city, state, and nation. Now therefore, I, Norm Jennings, Mayor of the city of Salina, do hereby proclaim May 2, 2013, as a day of prayer.
Do you have any activities that you would like to let us know about in celebration of the National Day of Prayer?
Yes, we will have a community prayer service on Thursday, May 2, at the First Baptist Church, 843 Lewis Avenue, from 7:00 to 8:30 AM.
I have a signed copy of that proclamation if you'd like to come forward. We have no other awards and proclamations, and we do not have any public hearings or items scheduled for a certain time, so that moves us into the consent agenda.
Item 6.1, approve the minutes of April 8, 2013. Item 6.2, resolution number 136997, appointing members to the Library Board.
Any items the Commissioner wishes pulled from the consent agenda? Seeing none, I entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move we, sorry, go ahead.
I move we approve the consent agenda.
Second?
Motion and second to approve the consent agendas read. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion carried 5-0. Today we have no development business, so that moves us into administration.
Item 8.1, second reading ordinance number 1310691, amending the Salina Code by repealing Chapter 32 entitled Sales.
This ordinance number 13-10691 was passed on first reading on the April 8 meeting. Since that time, no comments have been received. Do we have any public comments at this point in time? Seeing none, I bring it back to the Commission for action.
Mayor, I move we adopt on second reading ordinance number 13-10691.
Second.
For motion and a second to approve on second reading ordinance number 13-10691, would the clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Angel?
Aye.
Commissioner Crawford?
Aye.
Commissioner Householder?
Aye.
Commissioner Shirley?
Aye.
Mayor Jennings?
Aye. That motion carried 5-0.
Item 8.2, second reading ordinance number 1310692, amending the Salina Code by recodifying Chapter 31 entitled Public Utilities as Chapter 32.
This ordinance number 13-10692 was passed on first reading on April 8. Since that time, there have been no comments received. Do we have any public comments today? Seeing none, I bring it back to the Commission for action.
Mayor, I move we approve on second reading ordinance number 1310692, amending Salina Code by recodifying Chapter 31 entitled Public Utilities as Chapter 32.
Second.
For motion and a second to approve on second reading ordinance number 13-10692, would the clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Angel?
Aye.
Commissioner Crawford?
Aye.
Commissioner Householder?
Aye.
Commissioner Shirley?
Aye.
Mayor Jennings?
Aye.
Item 8.3, second reading ordinance number 1310693, amending the Salina Code by adding Chapter 32 pertaining to property maintenance.
This ordinance number 13-10692, excuse me, 693, was passed on first reading April 8, 2013. Since that time, there have been no comments received. The ordinance between first and second reading has received revisions to incorporate changes directed by the City Commission, and an additional change has been included for Section 31-1. Mr. Shreg, would you like to just provide a brief detail of the changes that were made?
Certainly. The first thing that I would note is it indicates that it's adding Chapter 32 when it's actually adding Chapter 31. So the ordinance title should be changed to 31 rather than 32. I'll just, you should have at your places a document with highlighted changes in it. Some of those changes were omitted from the packet, and I'll walk you through those quickly. As it relates to this ordinance, that document begins with Section 31-6 entitled Definitions. At last week's meeting, I noted that the definition of inoperable vehicle was targeted at vehicles on the assumption that they were to be registered and licensed and addressed lawful operation on the streets. And there's a recognition that the equipment, rolling stock, trailers, those type of things might not be subject to registration. So the definition of inoperable vehicle was amended such that it accounts for rolling equipment and trailers. It's still the intention that those vehicles must be able to be used as they're intended and be essentially roadworthy, is the intention of that revision. With respect to weeds, staff added some additional exceptions, calling out ponds, creek, or stream banks, also trying to address the kind of broader areas that might be a grassland or a forest ecosystem. We proposed 2,000 square foot area and then proposed maintenance standards similar to the agricultural maintenance standards that we discussed last week. With respect to penalties, there was clarification made regarding the fact that the city has the right to pursue assessment or collection, either of those two depending on the circumstances. Additionally, then, there was a clarification that fines assessed under the chapter can be collected through municipal court and paid to the general fund except for assessment of court costs. So it just makes it similar to municipal court prosecution. There's also clarification that prosecution of an offender does not limit the city's right to pursue assessment or collection, again, keeping those options open. And then in Section D, similarly, fines assessed shall be collected by the municipal court and paid over to the general fund. So all of those changes, as it related to prosecution, were really just kind of clarifications of the process. Then lastly, there's an additional notation that the code official, another basis for appeal to the Building Advisory Board Appeal Panel would be that the code official has incorrectly denied a request for a modification or alternate materials, methods, or equipment. So if you are a property owner, you'd have the opportunity to apply to the building official to indicate, I'd like to propose a modified approach in terms of construction standards, whatever the case may be, or I'd like to propose alternative materials, methods, or equipment. That would be the first opportunity. In the event that that request was denied, then that can be appealed to the Building Advisory Board Appeal Panel. So I'd be happy to answer any other questions you might have, but there are other topics that came up that will be covered in the next ordinance, but those were the amendments we made in response to the discussion on this ordinance from last week.
Thank you. Any questions of staff? Do I have any public comment on this item today? Seeing none, I bring it back to the Commission for action.
Did you say we need to change that to 31?
Yes, please.
In the title, okay. Mayor, I move that we adopt on second reading ordinance number 13-10693, amending the Salina Code by adding Chapter 31 pertaining to property maintenance?
Second.
With a motion and a second to approve on second reading ordinance number 13-10693, would the clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Angel?
Nay.
Commissioner Crawford?
Aye.
Commissioner Householder?
Aye.
Commissioner Shirley?
Aye.
Mayor Jennings?
Nay. That motion carried 3-2.
Item 8.4, second reading ordinance number 1310694, amending Section 38-1 of the Salina Code by providing a local amendment to the standard traffic ordinance.
This ordinance number 13-10693 was also passed on first reading April 8. Since that time, no comments have been received. The ordinance was revised between first and second reading to incorporate changes directed by the City Commission, and an additional change has been included in Section 31-1. Mr. Shreg, would you like to review these changes, please?
Certainly. You should have a second document entitled ordinance number 13-10694 at your seat that has highlighted sections indicating the sections that were changed. Within Section 85, subsection A14, that wording was revised to be more all-encompassing of prohibiting yard parking, with the exception of yard parking that's compliant with the zoning regulations of the city as relates to surfacing and location and enclosed yards. And secondly, there was discussion last week about intermittent need for special event parking, and so the third exception was added to try to create a scenario without the need for a special event permit in advance, but rather to contemplate parking that's necessitated by an isolated or intermittent event. It was limited to commercial, governmental, educational, or not-for-profit, intentionally trying to prevent the scenario where we've got parking on residential property, residential private property, and basically contemplating overflow parking such that it does not intrude on public rights of way or railroad rights of way. As one additional note, the other two exceptions that are not highlighted were in the ordinance previously. They were at the top of that listing, we had to reword it a little bit, but those were pre-existing exceptions.
So that would provide, for example, the overflow parking for the River Festival and those unimproved lots by the Bicentennial.
Correct. Yes. And then on a commercial basis, if there's ongoing parking on an unsurfaced area currently, that would be an existing non-conforming use, and we'd deal with that like any other zoning non-conformity.
Any other questions of staff? Do we have any public comment on this item today? Seeing none, I bring it back to the Commission for action.
I move we approve.
Oh, don't stir my thunder.
Oh, I stole it, sorry. I move we approve ordinance number 13-10694 on second reading, amend in Section 38-1 of the Salina Code by providing a local amendment to the standard traffic ordinance.
Second.
A motion and a strong second to approve on second reading ordinance number 13-10694, would the clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Angel?
Aye.
Commissioner Crawford?
Aye.
Commissioner Householder?
Aye.
Commissioner Shirley?
Aye.
Mayor Jennings?
Nay. That motion carried 4-1. That moves us into other business.
Mayor, before we go into the two items that are on the agenda, and I know you want to get to those pretty quickly, we did put it sure in front of you, ordinance number Last week, that was not approved by all of you, by unanimous vote. We weren't sure, we had some questions whether that was intentional, whether there was confusion as we were going into all those items that were listed last week. And all that, what that item did was renumber the placement of the smoking regulations. So it was kind of a housekeeping item, but the thought being is if you want to leave it where it is, that's perfectly fine, but if you wanted to have an opportunity to reconsider it, we just put it in front of you so you could choose to do that or not.
And this item moved it from Section 30.5-1 to 30.5-10. Is that right for the renumber?
Yeah, it took the sections that were 30.5-1 through 30.5-10 and brought them into Chapter 17 for you, Article 3.
Any question by any Commissioners that think this died for a lack of second and maybe due to confusion?
We just need to move on this as a regular item.
I think it would be best, in that it did, you're correct, it did die for lack of emotion, if you all could add it to your agenda, and because it's the same day, it does take a unanimous vote. But if that is your wish, then you could move on to consideration of the ordinance.
Sure.
Yeah, so if somebody would like it to be a part of, we just make a motion to add it to the agenda?
I'll make that motion to add ordinance number 13-10688 to today's agenda.
Second.
Motion and a second to add consideration of ordinance number 13-10688 on first reading to today's agenda. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion carried 5-0. Do we have any questions for staff on this item? Do we have any public comment on this item? Seeing none, I bring it back to the Commission for action.
Mayor, I move we adopt ordinance number 13-10688.
Second.
For motion and a second to approve ordinance number 13-10688 on first reading. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion carried 5-0. Now we move into other business.
Item 9.1, comments from Commissioner Angel.
It's my turn. Thank you, Madam Clerk. First, I have to say thank you to my family and the kids for bringing me roses tonight. That's a first, so thank you, boys. Thanks, Mom. I was trying to think of the top three things that we've done as a Commission that I thought was three things we could be really proud of, and the top two came to mind really easily, and then the three just kind of pelled in comparison, so I've decided to just switch it to a top two. And the first was all done with our prior Commission, which was finally getting resolution to the Kenwood and Oakdale Park controversy that has been going on, I think since before I even lived here. So thank you to staff and our county Commissioners and Greg Bangston for making that happen. And then the second is pretty obvious, I think, to everyone, and it's been going on for close to a decade, which is finally getting that first consent decree from the federal court so we can start getting that plume cleaned up on the west side of town. And I don't have a third because everything else just pelled in comparison to those top two. I do want to thank my family, my mom, kids, Jack, I'm glad to see you're awake now, and my husband for supporting me and allowing me to serve. Thank you to all of our staff, our legal counsel, executive staff, you guys all work so hard and try to do what you think is best and try to read our minds all the time, so thank you for all your hard work. Thank you to Mr. Lover, our community partners, the Chamber and the Airport Authority, the county, I see one of our county Commissioners back there, and to the Board of Education for being so easy to work with, and really, all of us always having Salina's best interests at heart. Thank you to all my Commissioners I've served with, past and present and future. Good luck. I know you all are doing it for the right reasons. And finally, to the voters, thank all of you for trusting me enough to give me your vote, and hopefully you've agreed with me, more often than you disagreed with me. That's all I can hope for, so thank you.
I would just like to extend my and hopefully all of the Commission's appreciation for all the work that you've done for the community, and it's been a pleasure serving with you these four years. I guess that'll bring us to my comments.
Unless that's it.
No.
Short and sweet.
Yeah, it really should be short and sweet. The beautiful thing about following Commissioner Angel is I don't have to worry about that long list that she went through, making sure that she mentioned everybody, because I can just say that I've got a heartfelt thank you to everybody that Commissioner Angel mentioned. It's been a challenging four years. I would not be honest if I didn't say that. It's been a challenging four years for the nation, for the state, for our community. But one of the things that absolutely continues to fascinate me about Salina, and one of the reasons why I chose to move back here now, better than a decade ago, is the heart of the community. We can disagree, we can go at things from different perspectives, but at the end of the day, I think we're a community that really values community. I think we're a community that values citizens, the people, the businesses that are here, the hopes and dreams of the future. And what I would like to encourage everyone is the perspective that I've gained over the past four years. These Commissioners that'll serve in the future are doing so at great sacrifice. We joked earlier with the two incoming Commissioners, and I told them you'll lose half of your friends every week. The good news is mathematically, it's impossible to split that last person in half, so you'll always at least have one friend. And I've been looking forward to this day where I get to start remaking friends. But all joking aside, they will sacrifice great time, time where they would much rather be with family, family in crisis, friends in need, and doing different things, but they will stand as your Commissioners, your elected Commissioners, and they will give every issue all of their heart because that's what you've called them to do. So at times, it requires great grace on the part of the community and understanding when it seems like you can't understand what this group does. But the five that will be here after today will serve you well. The staff that is a part of the city, I would say is probably second to none in every level throughout the organization. And just remember that next time you seem to be discouraged by a headline or a soundbite over the radio, that we are a community that is about community. It's been a pleasure serving as your mayor for the last year and as a Commissioner for four years. I thank you.
Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Kansas.
And the Constitution of the State of Kansas.
And faithfully discharge the duties.
And faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the Office of City Commissioner.
Of the Office of City Commissioner.
In and for the city of Salina, Kansas.
In and for the city of Salina, Kansas.
So help me God.
So help me God.
We will now call the organizational meeting of April 15, 2013, to order. And call roll. Commissioner Blanchard?
Here.
Commissioner Crawford?
Here.
Commissioner Hardy?
Here.
Commissioner Householder?
Here.
Commissioner Shirley?
Here.
I will now accept nominations for Mayor and Chairman of the Board of Commissioners.
I move that we accept Barb Shirley for Mayor and Chairman of the Board of Commissioners.
Second. I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I will now accept nominations for Acting Mayor and Vice Chairman of the Board of Commissioners.
I move we nominate Erin Householder as Acting Mayor. No, I'm sorry.
Yeah, all act as mayor sometime.
As vice mayor.
Yeah.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
There was a little hesitation there, John.
Can I go ahead and get Samantha Angel and Norm Jennings up here so we can present them with their plaques? For their dedication the last four years to the city.
We will now hear from Madam Mayor Shirley.
Just kind of echo the thoughts of former Mayor Jennings and Samantha, and thanking the community, and especially my family who's put up with a lot the last couple of years when I stress out about certain issues or need help with something and needing advice. I do appreciate the voters for trusting me enough to stand up here and represent you over the next year. I'm especially happy to see my new commissioners up here and work again with Kay. She's one of the, honestly, one of the best people I've ever known in my life. She's been, she's been great the last couple of years. I am going to miss Samantha because she was always there with her legal advice, and it's going to be hard for me the next two years without you explaining things to me. So I guess, I guess Mr. Bangston will have to, he's going to have to dumb it down for me a little bit.
I don't really know her that well.
And what I really appreciate about former Mayor Jennings is we didn't always agree on everything, but he always spoke from his heart and he was always very sincere, and I know the community was always in his best interest. And I know he'll continue serving his community, not in a political spectrum, but in his own, in his own personal life, and I do appreciate that, and hope to see him at many events over the next couple of years. So thank you again.
Fantastic. I move to adjourn.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Where are you?
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.